Dear my Father, thank you for this beautiful weather that you have given us. We just do not come to you often enough to tell you thank you for all the blessings that we get every single moment of every single day. Please be with these young men as they make decisions for our county and please be with our county patrons as the sickness is just going rampant. Please be with everyone that's in the hospitals with cancers and other things. We just know you're in control. We know we need to let you be in control. We ask all these things in your sin's name, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We can sit if I'm in a place in America. To the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Finally. Hey, Ma'am.
For who?
I did. Do you have your proclamation that I was looking this morning?
Oh, my gosh, I wish you didn't send that to me and I lost it.
I just copied it from last year since this is my first year, hopefully. You don't need to read it.
If you want to.
Whereas Alphapa County Farm Bureau, as a not-for-profit general farm organization operates within the boundaries of the Alphapa County of the state of Oklahoma, has served the farmers and ranchers of this great county since 1943. And whereas the Alphapa County Farm Bureau, though its concern for both agriculture producers and consumers, helps to develop a basic understanding of the conflict structure that puts food on the tables of all Americans and most of all for the world. And whereas the Alphapa County Farm Bureau has dedicated itself and its members to maintain the agriculture as an honorable and respectable profession, which has been the base for much of the economy prosperity in Alphapa County and the state of Oklahoma. We have 688 member families in Alphapa County and in the Alphapa County Farm Bureau. So our Farm Bureau Week, they said we were night of February 17th through the 21st.
I'll make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Oh, favorit, aye.
Thank you.
May I all of you get a picture?
Yes. And you might take this next door to my office and have them to make a copy and then we can have the original or the copy, whichever one you want. Okay, sure. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
They get you.
No way, ma'am.
We can, no big deal.
One, two, three. All right.
All right, it's my turn.
Thanks. Oh, I have to send it to you. Go ahead.
Sorry.
One, two, three. I don't think it gets better than that. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, I'll run and get a copy in. Just leave it in there. Okay. Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, Megan.
Let's move up this road, unpaid roads grant up to here and that way.
Let's do that.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
They all know about the unpaid road grant, don't they?
Yes.
Okay, cool. We know about the unpaid program. I don't expect me to say anything.
Excuse me.
Thank you for the first mistake. It's horrible. It's terrible. And we are going to have an unpaid road grant class here in Alphapa County at the dining room at Fairgrounds on March the 19th. This March. And Trampus is new school are going to come up?
Trampus is coming up.
Yeah, yeah, Trampus is coming up. That was one of the dates that Pollack gave me and then Louis passed away. So it will totally be confirmed on Thursday. But, I mean, I called her Monday and then she told me about her dad. So anyway, that date was one of the dates to open. I know it's spring break, but that's what Trampus picked, so. I hope nobody knows he wants it for the spring. I know, that's what I've hoped for. So anyway. So if we can get... Can you take a picture for me, ma'am?
You bet.
Another picture?
Oh, yes. There we go, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Oh, you guys, it's there. One, two, three. All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you. And we're so excited. So we would love, thank you. We're excited about your new bridge project. Laura told me about that.
Yes.
And I went to the prescriber.
Have to interrupt again.
Partner.
Yeah.
Okay, aye.
Thank you. It was so cool. Yes, I did. And hopefully we can get all the commissioners and all, oh, sorry, hey, guys, all three of you guys into that. Each one of you will get $75,000. And the grants aren't very hard. From what I've heard, they'll help you write them. And I'll help if I can't, I mean, I mean, Trampus has said that they're not easy to do.
One page.
That they're not easy to do. So, and I know that that, one of the Wilson places, I know that Road needs a lot to help on that side of the county. I'm sorry, Derek, I don't know anything about your side of the county. So thank you for letting me interrupt. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I was trying to get here. So.
Appreciate you.
Thank you so much. And thanks for being patient for your payment. You know, it takes us day a while. Have a good meeting, you guys.
Goodness.
Is that here? I kind of live like a bull over a tire.
Rafi?
Mike?
Did she take the picture?
Yes, I got it right. What am I going to do?
You guys are signing the bottom.
Sign the bottom, you said?
Yeah.
Megan, were you sending that picture with her?
Yes.
No.
And that was Kelly's painting.
Basically a dollar. I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll say it. And no warrants for payment? I agree. I'll try. Get out off the back.
Okay, ma'am, I don't got it.
She got it through.
You, oh, sure.
How about? For gifts.
I don't know. I tried drinking the real Dr. Pepper yesterday when it was filled with piss. I'm like, it's not helping. I'm just dragging.
Thank you.
And tell Ruth.
You guys seen a bit of list of, and I can run out the girls coming up from the village.
What's that?
The upbeat of list of. I should. You got them both again. Definitely been escaping the flu and.
My daughter woke up this morning and she feels like better.
Oh, no. Oh, no. My grandsons, Grady hasn't got it, but my grandsons, Lyle had it. Miss, well, they only go Monday, Wednesday and Friday. I miss Wednesday and Friday of school. I stayed home with them. Mama stayed home with them Wednesday, his dad stayed home with them Thursday, and I stayed home with him Friday. And he just, is still just, I mean.
He's the leader.
White. Yeah. And then Grady was starting to come down with it. He has a pacifier, so they've taken his pacifier away from me except for nap time and bedtime. And he, about 10:30 in the morning, he comes and says, "Bed." And I went, "You want to go to bed?" "Yeah, meet me." "Do you just want your meet me or do you want to go to bed?" Because I'm, I get yelled at. And he wanders through the house with it. He went and crawled in bed, no TV. I went and read him my book and he was out. And then about four o'clock, he told me that again. I'm like going, "You never take two naps." He went right back into the bed. I read him one book, he was out again. I texted his mom, I said, "Um, he takes..." And she says, "That's what Lyle does." And Lyle never takes a nap, but he would go to sleep. And we did the best thing we could.
Yeah, they needed it.
Yeah.
Poor thing.
We had to play beyond the Fairgrounds and Lyle goes to those and takes his horse to them. He was so mad when his mom and dad told him, "No, you need to, ma'am, you don't need to go out there." And we got halfway to my house. He says, "Hey, ma'am, I think it's a good thing I came to your house. I'm tired." I went, "Aye." Have a green. He was sure not having any part of it. Well, taxes up a little bit, but nothing much. It should be.
What was it?
Sixty-one thousand. Eighty-one thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Hold there. Aye. First orders.
We have like this one, but you two share, calling a rescue and nest.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Road crossing permits.
Have three, all three of them are to street. Two's, two of them are no charge and the last one's from Target and is $1,000.
Eight months box summer, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the road crossing permits.
Month of officers reports we have from sheriff, assessor, county clerk, and the treasurer. Do you want this, an air and any ceiling?
You know, if you can, just so they copy it or something. Even though there's no charge on the phone. I'll make a motion to approve the month of officer reports. Off there. Aye. Alcohol beverage checks. Or vehicle. I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol beverages. On favor? Aye. Appropriations. I'll make a motion to approve appropriations. Resolution for fair board terms.
Nobody had in the folder, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Favorit, aye. ACB decided for official repository.
I think this is for the sheriff's department to run and I'm sure they'll make this sign a a whole new signature page once it also takes that over. Maybe not, but I think it is a do.
Make a motion to approve the repository sign. Last letter, transport update. We have one of these. In the meeting last week. There it go. There was 3,000, over 3,600 bills that were filed this year and so getting through them all, they ain't had time to really get through everything on them. A lot of them they're going to have to actually go talk to the, to the author to find out exactly what all, what they're thinking in their bills and why they put them out there. But I'll go through a handful of these. House Bill 1146, for Miss County's to, after being authorized by a special election, levy a tax on the severance of service and mine minerals. That's a bill that's been thrown out there every single year, but it never has got through. Basically, it kind of more applies to eastern, southeastern Oklahoma where, you know, they're mining things down there, sending them to Texas and there's no tax on any surface minerals. So that's just being given to Texas with no tax on it. Texas taxes as soon as it crosses the border. So it'd be kind of like, I guess you kind of think of oil and gas, we get a tax on it. But for this, there's no tax on surface minerals. So that's thrown out there. House Bill 1339, counties allowed to work with ambulance districts on their properties. I think this was thrown out because there's somewhere in the state a district attorney saying that they cannot help the ambulances. That's why it's out there. Let's see. House Bill 1372, exemption of gross production tax on certain wells. When you first see that, you're like, oh, no. Well, what it actually is, is there's around over 18,000 abandoned wells in Oklahoma. And what this is, is basically trying to lower the taxes if they go back in there, rebuild the well. And so that they, basically incentivize them to go back to drill the well. So right now, we're getting nothing off of them abandoned wells if they go back and re-drill them. It would be a two and a half percent tax on production and then it would go to the normal seven and a half percent after five years. So basically, it's getting nothing. This would actually at least give us something if they go back and re-drill the abandoned wells. It's kind of incentivizeable companies to go in and drill some wells. Let's see. Okay, which is Senate Bill 73, raises the cap on the SERB fund to 200 million. While I'm on this, I got some information here. Some of this stuff, I was just asking, it's just information that Randy gave me. But, or if we go back, the Association of General Contractors did a, basically a study to figure out where we were at on, from 2004 to 2024, or, you know, what it would take for us to, with inflation and everything else, where we would have to be at today. And basically, it'd be 128% increase in funding is what we would have to have today compared to 2004. And then on our CRIB and our SERB monies, and just a little quick history here. When the state was running a deficit fiscal year 2015, they removed $50 million from us. Except 2017, they removed another $50 million and in 2018, they removed another $130 million. So that's fifty million. Fifteen, in 2017, another 50 million. And 2018, 130 million. So there's $230 million in appropriations for CRIB and SERB that were taken out during those times. In 2020, they added $30 million back and in 2021, they added another $20 million back. So from where we were before 2015, we're still down $180 million. It's going into our road and bridge improvement funds for the state. So these bills, you know, increasing the SERB to 200 million and then also Senator Hayes' bill, which is Senate Bill 258, that's adding a one-time $50 million to the SERB. So those bills are, the 200 million would just increase it, that would be a yearly thing. The 50 million is just a one-time, here's $50 million and next year, we're all over. So those bills are out there. If, on this page here, let's see, if I can get the right one. It gives you the percentage of, with inflation thrown in, where each county is at. You can see Alphapa County there. We're not sitting near as bad as a lot of these other counties were and that's partly because of our oil and gas infrastructure. And the SERB formula is based off of road miles and how many, but part of the formula, road miles and how many bridges you have. So with Alphapa County having the fifth plus bridges in the state of Oklahoma, we received a little more money because of that. But on top of that, you can say, well, we did better. Well, that's because we have more bridges. We have to take care of it and spend more money. And we have the oil and gas infrastructure, which means that we have trucks and everything else, you know, deteriorating our bridges and roads faster. So really, all in all, yes, it looks good on paper that we did better than a lot of the counties, but. Still not where we used to be. It's not where it needs to be to be able to keep up with what we got to fix. Let's see. This page here just gives you, Randy gave me this, just to give you a breakdown of county by county, how many bridges each district has. And the other thing we got to remember is these are just bridges that are over 20 feet. So anything else on. There's a lot more under 20 feet. There's a lot more bridges. There's a lot more bridges we got that are under twenty feet that, that aren't even considered for the funding that we have to take care of. So those are, you know, force account bridges coming straight out of our account, no help whatsoever to be able to fix those. So that doesn't, doesn't even include all that. Um. I'll give you that, so you can look up mine.
He likes that, close to you, don't he?
Well, I may not have got it in here. Somehow I got lost in the shuffle when I was putting these off. Uh, basically, it's a, I'll just give you a quick overview, I don't have it in here, though. It's our, uh, structurally deficient and our obsolete bridges in, character, and basically, it's a sheet that's basically, and I can send that to you guys, it's based off county by county. Uh, Alphafa County, we have thirty-six bridges, I believe, that was considered structurally deficient or obsolete bridges. I had Randy send me a breakout, which I think is in this email here, that he has breakout of what defines structurally deficient and obsolete. Basically obsolete is just too narrow of a bridge for the most part.
It's got that stuff.
Yeah.
Page, I mean.
Yeah, there's a spreadsheet that broke everything, uh, what we had going. When ODOT figures the repair cost or the replacement cost on those, they, for whatever reason, they will not give Randy how they came up with their numbers. Um, but from basically discussing it, what we found out, or what we think, their numbers, the figures they're throwing out there are the, are the bridge top. So we're not talking about embutments, we're not talking about approaches, and we're just discussing it. The total on that was about, um, I wanna say seven hundred and fifty million dollars statewide of what it would take to replace, just using ODOT's numbers. But if we use the actual number, which actually finishes the whole bridge, it'd be closer to one point five billion dollars of bridges in state of Oklahoma that need to be replaced. Uh, our number was, I think, somewhere around, uh, ten million is what they had on there. So basically, if you go to that, would be twenty to twenty-five million to replace the bridges that they have on their, their list of structurally deficient or obsolete. So with these bills on our funding, obviously, we could sure use it. Uh, it'd be nice to have the, have the money coming in so we can do more force projects and fix the bridges that we need to fix, instead of getting on a five-year plan and waiting five to ten years to get something taken care of.
Yeah.
But, uh, so with that, I'll just, I'll move on. I just wanted to cover that part of the transportation part of it. Um, Senate Bill three thirty-four, raises the limit on certain public contracts, which may be awarded without a competitive bidding process from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand to what?
Uh, ten thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Is that a building?
That's basically all of our stuff.
You think it would?
Yeah. Said, everybody just change it, instead of now, we wouldn't have to go out and bid it long, it's under twenty-five thousand.
Has that passed yet, or is that?
No. No, that just, that bill's out there for this session. Uh, Senate Bill four two, establishes minimum experience requirements for CDL instructors. This was from Senator Stewart, Senator Stewart's a former county commissioner. Um, he, this is one, we gotta find out more what he's, what he's thinking on, because it actually, the standards that's in the bill would actually be above federal standards. So then we would be in a situation where now, we're already having a hard time finding CDL, now we're gonna have a hard time finding CDL instructors. So that would just make it, that would just snowball the whole thing. So I think it's something that, that gonna have to have some conversation with, uh, Senator Stewart, find exactly what is, what he just wanted to do there. Um. Let's see, Senate Bill seven fifty-two, authorizing county purchasing agents to establish online bidding process with certain vendors. And then Senate Bill seven seventy-two, increases the value limits requirements for equipment inventory. So we went from five hundred to two thousand, and I don't have the deck number of what he has in his bill, as far as what we'd have to keep on inventory. Um, and the last one, I got, there's, like I said, there's a ton of bills, I'm just gonna highlight some of them. Uh, the last one here is House Bill sixteen sixty-six, and there's two other bills out there by, uh, different authors. It defines counties as public agencies and Oklahoma Underground Facilities Damage Prevention Act. That's basically what we ran into with the Corporation Commission, with the grader hitting the pipeline in southern Oklahoma. And the Corporation Commission was trying to tell us that we have to go okie every single mile before we break it. So they were saying that counties weren't considered as public agencies or something like that. So this will just define, uh, so that's out of the way. And this was, that was all pushed by the federal government on the Corporation Commission, and it trickled down to us. So we're just gonna define it in our statutes, and we can get that done. But that's the gist of what I've got. And there's, like I said, there's a lot of bills are still, there's a lot of them that we took go action with support or not support, because we gotta find out more about what they're actually about. That's all I got.
Thank you.